Allow me to call this evening's meeting of the zoning board of appeals for the town of Carver to order. It is 7:01 and we are in Town Hall in room number four. I observe, as always, we have our friends from Area 58 with us. We're happy to see them. And also, as is my custom, I will introduce briefly the individual members of the board for anybody who may be watching at home. To my far-left is Fran Mello, who served many years as an alternate, now a permanent member. We're happy to have her aboard. She has years of experience on the management side and working in business administration. To my immediate left is Eric Mueller, who for many years owned a septic business in town, sold that, then went to work as a territory manager for a larger septic company. And he's very helpful on all issues having to do with water and septic. To my far-right, on the edge of the table, is our new alternate, Mark Poirier, who comes to us with many, many years of experience in the education field and was most recently the chair of the Science and Technology Department in a local high school. We're happy to have him. Sitting next to him, to his left, is Alan Germain, who sits on a number of different boards and committees in town. He is the chair of the Finance Committee, as some of you may know, and also sits as a member of the Conservation Commission. We're pleased to have him aboard. And finally, to my immediate right, the senior member of the board, but definitely still youthful in spirit, is Sharon Clark. She has many, many years of experience running titles and dealing with land issues. She has probably forgotten, as I've said before, more about real estate than I know. I'm the chair of the committee, Stephen Gray, and have a private law practice in town. So those are the brief introductions. Also, I would like to take tonight to deal with administrative issues first. Not that they're really issues, but these are things that we need to take care of from meeting to meeting. The first thing is the minutes. And these are minutes for October 29, 2019, that our clerk put together for us and that I then edited and passed on to the individual board members for their review. These minutes are lengthy, single-spaced, and took the two of us a long time to draft and then edit. So has everybody received those minutes from me?
Yes.
Has everyone had an opportunity before tonight to examine those minutes?
Yes.
Does anyone have any changes, amendments, modifications that they'd like to make or any questions they'd like to raise? I hear no one's saying anything, so I assume that there are no questions, no amendments or modifications. So do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor of adopting the minutes as written for our meeting of October 29, 2019?
Aye.
Okay, so those are adopted. And we also have some executive session minutes, which I feel are appropriate to release at this time because one of the cases that was appealed by neighbors that had come before us has since settled out of court with minimal expense to the town and no involvement with this board after it left us. So this is a very favorable resolution, especially for the town, and it upholds in full detail our decision concerning this particular matter. The executive session minutes relating to this case were from our meeting of October 1, 2019 and October 29, 2019. This is the Land Court case of John J. Caporella, co-trustee of the Caporella Family Trust, dated June 30, 2009. The docket number on that matter was 19MISC-00360. And again, that matter now has been dismissed by the Land Court, so there's no reason, I feel, to hold these executive session minutes any longer. Has anybody had any questions about this?
I see the minutes of the first, but I don't see the minutes of the 29.
Yeah, I don't have any.
And I have those with me, I think. So we have a couple of copies. Here's one for you to go over quickly, and here's one for you guys over here. I think that I had sent this along before anyway.
The executive session minutes?
Yeah.
These are regular ones?
Oh, those are the regular minutes. Did I give you the executive session minutes, Fran?
Yes.
Okay. So let's wait a minute for her to quickly go through these. I apologize, I gave you the regulars. And it's just three or four paragraphs, so be quick to go through.
Yep. Do you want those?
I saw them on the email.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You want to do these one at a time, Mr. Chairman? You want to make a motion?
Are you prepared to move forward? Mr. Germain, have you had enough time?
Yeah.
And Mr. Poirier? You're good. Okay. So let's do them one at a time. The first executive session minutes is from our meeting of October 1. Do I hear a motion to accept those ES minutes as written?
So moved.
Do I hear -- okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Let's do the same thing with regard to October 29. Do I hear a motion to accept?
I'll make that motion to accept.
Mr. Mueller, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
So those executive session minutes have been approved and now may be released publicly. So we didn't hold onto them very long this time, did we? All right. Now, we have two matters on our agenda tonight. The first one is case number 127-10-1, which is a continued case. This involves the petitioner Rosenbuds LLC requesting a variance pursuant to Article 27 zoning bylaw changes, Section 5,000.5, Subparagraph 2, location and dimensional controls, to allow a non-medical marijuana establishment within 500 feet of a religious facility. Property is located at 318 Tremont Street in Carver, Assessor's Map 127, Lot 10-1 in the industrial A District. Now, before we go any further, I want to advise the board and members of the public, as well as those at home, that the chair received an email yesterday afternoon from a Michelle Rosen, who is involved in this particular project, I'm assuming is a principal of Rosenbuds LLC. And she says in her email as follows -- I'll read this into the record. "After our last meeting and site walkthrough, Rosenbuds actively pursued the ideas suggested by the board," because we had a meeting previously with regard to this, "regarding solving the zoning issues that were present. Further investigation into the site showed more complications surrounding the issues. All of the issues are solvable, but will take longer than we expected. With all of that being said, we would like our proposal to be withdrawn without prejudice. We have many hopes to come back to the board when our site and the proposal is more ready and compliant with the bylaws. Rosenbuds appreciates all the help the board has provided with the project." And this is signed by Michelle Rosen and also Robbie Rosen. Again, I think those are the principals of the petitioner in this case. So there is a request before the board at this time to allow this petition to be withdrawn without prejudice. And for those watching at home, what that means is that this case will no longer be an active case that will be pursued at this board at this time, but seeing that the request is that it be withdrawn without prejudice, these folks would be able to come back before the board at a later point in time with a revised plan and additional information. So having said that, does anybody have any discussion that they'd like to make before we go to a vote? Do I hear a motion to grant the request to withdraw this petition at this time without prejudice?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Mueller, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that petition is now withdrawn without prejudice. We may or may not see these folks again, but for now, there is no active case before the zoning board as to this non-medical marijuana petition. Next, we have case number 50-8 and 10A, which is also a continued case. The petitioner is Sunraise Development LLC, requesting a variance pursuant to Sections 2230 and 5222 of the Carver zoning bylaw for property located at 0 Fuller Street in Carver, Assessor's Map 50, lots 8 and 10A, seeking a variance for minimum 150 linear feet of frontage for property with approximately 40 feet linear feet of frontage, a long forest street for a proposed 5-megawatt large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installation in a residential agricultural area. Now, as I said, this is a continued matter, and I observe the representative of the petitioner to be sitting with us tonight, as well as the planner for the town of Carver. There has, I should disclose, there has been further discussion about whether this petition should be before our board at this time, given the specifics of the proposal. And I want to turn the meeting over briefly to the petitioner's representative, Ms. Sterns, for any comments that she'd like to make at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. As for the record, Sarah Sterns with Hills &amp; Thomas on behalf of Sunraise Development. We're back again for this continued hearing. We spoke a few weeks back about our petition for variance for relief from the frontage requirement of 150 feet in a residential agricultural zone. If you recall, the board had asked for a little bit more information in terms of a conceptual plan that was sent through the planning department. You have a 11-by-17 copy in front of you, I see. I can kind of walk through that if the board would like.
This is what we were shown the last time?
Well, this is -- I use the same base, just for consistency, since we kind of went through that. And what we've done is added a conceptual solar array on what we referred to as bog 1 and bog 2 the last time we spoke. Again, just the red line is the property line. This property is made up of two parcels, and the conceptual location has a leader to it, so it would be on these two bogs. And again, it's a -- it's very much a concept. It's the preferred design from the developer's perspective, as well as the landowner. This is a project that we foresee will be placed on the cranberry bogs themselves. So we've overlaid that just to give the board a better visual idea of what we are thinking. Of course, subject to further design and permitting through the various boards from there.
Okay.
So that's the only piece of information that we've simulated.
And I also observe the planner in our audience tonight. Welcome him. And I think that you probably have some additional information that you could provide to the board at this time.
Sure. Ken Jim Walsh, trying to plan in the town of Carver. I received an email from Ms. Clark requesting Ken and myself and Mr. Mackey to be here tonight. I was able to meet with Bruce Mackey, the Planning Board Chair, as well as Bob Francis, the Building Commissioner. And we kind of looked at the question that Ms. Clark posed regarding the frontage requirement. And I believe her question was in relationship to whether or not, if you didn't have the access to the building project, could it still be considered frontage? And I spoke with, in our discussions with both Mr. Mackey and Mr. Francis, we determined that there are a number of lots in town that they have their access, their frontage requirement met in one area, but maybe due to terrain or wetlands or some other constraint, they have their actual access in another location where they either have a small tail into the property or they have easement agreement to another property.
Can I just jump in? Is their frontage conforming?
So in those specifications, they had conforming frontage, according to the bog. So then, you know, we also had a discussion, you know, say if this project, you know, the board didn't feel necessary to grant a variance, is there other mechanisms that the applicant could use to move forward? And so we kind of looked at the rear lot provisions of the zoning bylaw, and it's Section 2340, and said, okay, it looks like they could meet most of the conditions. And one question had to do with, was the provision where by May 4, 1998, they couldn't do any divisions after that period of time?
Right.
And so I kind of contacted Sarah, just to alert her to that, and, you know, it'd be something that they would have to do some further research to determine whether they could meet all the conditions under that section.
They have to be in common ownership, right? The two parcels?
Right.
Is that what it is?
And it looks like there's a proposal to put them into common ownership, because I guess technically they're different types of entities. One's a limited partnership, the other one's LLC. But they do have that plan to become one common parcel at some point. Actually, should they be able to move forward? When I was speaking with Bruce Mackey, because you brought the issue with the lawsuit, he mentioned that at that time, the Ward Street project had zero frontage on the street. They've had discussions with Marty McCollum, the planner at the time, as well as, I think it was Bob Morgan, the former building commissioner. And they had different concerns. One with Mr. Morgan apparently would have to do with the fact that they used an easement that at some point in the future, when the solar arrays went away, someone could claim that they had a right to a building lot in that parcel. I'm not sure if that's true or not, but...
How would that be different from this?
So if they have, if they use the rear lot provision, then that's a mechanism that's currently in our zoning that they could use to, you know, once they meet the conditions, so they have to get a letter from the building commissioner. That goes to the planning board. They approve the rear lot provision, then they can move forward with their project, is my understanding.
For this project?
For this, yeah, for this solar project.
Okay. I was asking how the previous case for what's a...
Oh, Ward Street, okay.
Right. You kind of melded the two.
Right, so Ward, yeah, Ward Street...
So how is no frontage different from 40 feet of frontage?
Right, so they were concerned that there is zero frontage on the property. So in the current Mr. Mackey, he feels that 40 feet is better than no frontage. They're in a better, you know, it's a little bit better position. If you look at, you know, solar project, you do have a tail, you don't have so much access until you hit wetlands, but that's better than zero for the, you know, in terms of the frontage.
What is frontage?
Arnie?
What is frontage? It's a loaded question. Have you looked at the definition?
I looked at the definition. Could I repeat it back to you verbatim? No?
Oh, I have it right here.
Talk to me about that. You know where I'm going with this?
So do you look in terms of access to the property?
Yes, yes. This is in our book, folks, page 104, which contains the definition of frontage, which says, or is defined as, "property through which actual access to the potential building site shall be required." Now, this 40 feet that you say they have, and that she says they have, is not the 40 feet that they're going to use for actual access to the building site, correct?
That's correct.
So is it the case, then, based upon the definition of frontage, that they have zero frontage at this time, based upon the plan which they are proposing?
So in case of Ward Street, that was where they had the zero frontage. And so that was the...
I mean, they've got 40 now, but for this project to go through, they're not going to be using that 40.
That's correct.
So I'm struggling with this. Given the definition of frontage here, the access that they have is, that 40 feet is not going to be used to get to the building site. So in reality, they have zero, right? For this particular project, they have no access at all?
Apparently so.
Does that make sense to you? Ms. Sterns?
So I guess the only addition that I would note is that when I went to the planning board informally to discuss this and to help get some guidance on the path to take, similarly to what Jim alluded to, is I was kind of told the same thing, of being sensitive to this subject and past events with this around the same portion of the bylaw that doesn't really spell it out, whether a project like this indeed does need to meet the frontage requirements, since we're not building a, building a home, our commercial establishment other than the solar array itself. So again, we felt that we should take the conservative path and request the relief. The only other thing I would add is that access to the proposed site would be unchanged to today's access. So there's no change proposed. I don't know if that weighs in on this discussion. As we talked about last time, there's really no plan to utilize that forest street where the frontage exists.
Rather than parsing too closely here, which I plead guilty of, given my occupation sometimes...
Yeah.
Let me ask you about the rear lot, that being a possible solution for where you want to get your client to go here. Is this something that you feel you can put together with support from the planning department in town, based on your discussions?
I think it's possible, but I haven't had the opportunity to look at all five criteria to figure out if this combination of land can meet all of those criteria. I just looked at it today for the first time as a potential path. You know, some of it can be easily met, others would take more time to look into it. I think it's possible.
I'm happy to hear that, because again, I'm struggling with the definition of frontage here. And I realize that you've got the 40 feet, but that, insofar as this particular project is concerned, is sort of illusory, because you're not going to be using it.
Right.
So it's there, but it's not really there for you or for your client. So what's your thought about maybe agreeing to a short continuance? And you do your due diligence, you speak to the nice folks in town here, and see if there's another way you can get to go on this.
I also have the concern when we talk about, frontage that's not really frontage, that we're going to give 110-foot variance to, is the precedence of this. That just gets us into trouble. So if we establish a precedent of frontage that's not really frontage that allows a solar array to go in, what slippery slope are we now headed down for the next person who comes in? And we try to be mindful of that.
Sure.
And this one has caused, you know, quite a bit of pondering among us individually. And it's, you know, we have the shape issue, we have 40 feet that, by your own testimony last time, isn't going to be used for anything, it's just the 40 feet on the plan.
And when we say a shape issue, not to interrupt, but I'm not so sure that there is a shape issue in this case. So if we can get past the frontage issue, Ms. Sterns, I don't know if you can get past the 40A issue.
Meaning?
Meaning, I don't know if there's anything especially distinctive about shape, about soil, or about topography in this case. I'm not, I'm only speaking for myself, but Ms. Clark is right when she says that this has caused a considerable amount of thinking on our part, and creative thinking too, because we don't like to say no to people. As you may know from your short period in town, we generally say yes if we can, if there's any way that we can. But this is, this is a little bit different, because we're dealing with a definitional issue, where you could argue with me until the cows come home, well, I've got 40 feet, I really only need 110. But on the other hand, you're not going to use it, so you really need 150. And then we've got the 40A issues. So the rear lot bylaw might be one that could be helpful to you, because as you know, or may know, I know the planner knows, individual lots in the RA District need not have the required amount of street frontage. You don't, you get past that issue straight away. And then, as you point out, there are four or five subparagaphs that you're going to have to take a look at there. So for me, I'm not especially opposed to this project. What I am sort of is the guardian of the gate in terms of complying with the plain language of the bylaws and their definitions. And that's where I'm having issues straight away, and then I've got the threshold state issues under 40A.
Right. Okay, that's fair enough. I think that, I think that makes sense, and, you know, we'd be happy to agree to a continuance that we can look into that.
Ms. Mello? Anything?
No.
You're good. Mr. Mueller?
I'm good.
Mr. Poirier?
Everything's good here.
Mr. Germain?
Your articulate as always, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And I haven't had my dinner tonight either, yet. Ms. Clark?
I'm good. Thank you for getting back to me so promptly.
You're welcome. And thank you, Ms. Sterns, for your patience. This is, these are somewhat turbulent waters that you're trying to negotiate.
I understand.
The board understands this and appreciates your sensitivity, because there's history here, as you know. So without getting into old stuff, I think that your approach on this particular petition has been exemplary so far. And I hope that your discussions with the folks at the town in the next two or three weeks, or whenever you guys can get together, bear fruit. So let's talk about a new date for a continuance.
Busy month.
I think we need to go to January.
Uh, 7th?
I think that would be okay. Ms. Mello?
Yep.
Mr. Mueller?
Yep.
Mr. Poirier?
What's the date?
7th.
Tuesday, the 7th.
Oh, boy.
Just might note that the next, the planning board will be on December 10, but the following year is January 14, so if we were to have something that were to go before the Planning Board accepting the rear lot provision, you might want to plan it for...
Ms. Sterns, what do you say about that?
This is a suggestion. Is there a possibility that we can come out on the 10th, on December 10?
Uh, probably not.
Okay, we could, we'll... I'm going to be there anyway.
I know, I know.
Um, yeah, that's fine, whatever works out best.
So make it, what you're saying, Mr. Walsh?
After the 10th?
Yeah, after the, January 14.
After the 14th.
So after the 14th. Okay, we're not meeting on my birthday again this year. Just getting that out there.
Full say.
So what day?
21st?
What day is it?
About the 15th, Wednesday.
I said we're not meeting on my birthday again.
Well, sorry, what about the following?
Don't get her mad, please.
Following Tuesday, I thought you were talking about following Tuesday.
No, that's the 21st.
21st?
Yeah.
Look, I want to do that.
I've got a one for you, Sarah.
Sure.
So what's, you're looking at the 21st?
January 21st.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to continue this hearing to January 21, so as to allow the petitioner to further consult as it sees fit?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Ms. Clark has that second? All in favor?
Aye.
So this matter goes over to January 21, and Ms. Sterns, the chair, would ask, listen to me, talking to myself in the third person, I ask that you please, if your approach to this case should change, before we reconvene on the 21st, let us know.
Sure.
You may or may not want to come back before us on the merits. You may or may not decide to go forward, I don't know, it's up to you. But if you decide not to go forward on the merits at that time, we require another continuance, just let me know.
Absolutely.
Thanks. Happy holidays to you.
Thank you.
Happy holidays to you all as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Planner. I appreciate your input. I do.
See you at the RDA.
I observe that we have no correspondence other than those emails, or that email that I read into the record from the previous case, which withdrew without prejudice, that's the marijuana case. Does anyone have anything further that they would like to discuss at this time? I don't see any hands raised or voices raised, so I ask now if there's a motion to adjourn. Mr. Jermaine has that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.